To order the regular meeting of the Caroline County Planning Commission for June twenty six, twenty twenty five. Our first item is we're going to do a pledge of allegiance called by an invocation and I invite everyone to join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, we come this afternoon thanking you for your minute blessings and thanking you for these opportunities. And we ask that as we proceed before everyone with the meetings, uh, everything will be in order, indecency in order. We just have blessings over, uh, all that archipelago. Yes, so Jesus, thank you, pray.
Amen. My way of introduction, I'd like to start to my far left. We have the pleasure of having, uh, Mr. Steve Rollins representing the Mattapanai District. To my left is Dr. Carol Horton, representing the Port Royal District. I'm Bob Schwartz, representing the Bowling Green District. To my immediate right is Mr. Richard Williams and our vice chair, representing Western Carolina. To his right is Mr. J D Young, representing, uh, Reedy Church. Far end is Mr. Lee Tingler, representing the Madison District. We have Mr. Leon Hughes, the Director of Planning and Economic Development, and Mr. Craig Pennington, our county planner. And let's see, I believe we have Jeff Voit and his bride Priscilla up in the, uh, sports booth. So we don't get to see him like we used to, but, uh, that will take care of the introductions. Commissioners, you have before you the minutes from our April and May meetings. I trust each of you have had an occasion to review those minutes. Are there any additions or corrections?
I did not see any.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that, uh, the, uh, April twenty tw- April twenty four, twenty twenty five minutes be accepted as written.
Motion by Mr. Young is our second.
I will second that.
And who was the second, uh, Mr. Williams? All right, motion to accept as, as presented, seconded. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Minutes for that meeting will be accepted as presented. Regarding the minutes for the May twenty two, twenty twenty five meeting, are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept, uh, May twenty twenty five minutes as posted.
Second.
Uh, motion by Dr. Horton, seconded by Mr. Williams. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. The minutes are accepted as presented. Our first item tonight under subdivisions, Pendleton Land Development LLC owner applicant, Mr. Pennington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Item tonight, SB zero two, twenty twenty five, Pendleton Land Development, section thirteen. Applicants requesting approval of a preliminary plat for section thirteen of Pendleton, which is a mixed-use community designated for single-family, multifamily, and commercial uses. Section thirteen proposes eight condo buildings with twenty-four units in each building for a total of one hundred and ninety-two units. This plat will create one new lot around section thirteen. The parking lots, access drives, and common areas associated with section thirteen will be owned and maintained by the HOA. The rezoning for Pendleton, RZ fourteen ninety-nine, approved a total of three thousand five hundred and eight dwelling units. As of June twenty twenty five, a total of seven hundred and three units have been permitted, leaving two thousand eight hundred and five remaining units to be constructed. Section thirteen accounts for one hundred and ninety-two of the fourteen hundred multifamily units allowed by the rezoning. This preliminary plat is consistent with the Caroline County zoning and subdivision ordinance and is a by-right subdivision. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat at this time. On your screen is the preliminary plat that creates one lot around the condo complex. And next page, please. And this is the page from the approved construction plans that shows, sorry, that shows the layout of the condo buildings. Uh, so section thirteen, construction plans have already been approved by VDOT Public Utilities and Planning Department. This plat will create the lot around the condo units. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
The depth of each parking space is that in conformity with the new twenty-foot?
Uh, it is not. This construction plans were approved prior to the text amendment adoption of the new parking space ordinance. Um, it did comply with the parking spaces and aisle widths that were in the ordinance at the time of approval.
Commissioners, any questions?
Uh, yes, I have a couple. Does this come under our effort for affordable housing also, or no?
Uh, no, this is part of the original rezoning, um, for Pendleton subdivision. They were allowed fourteen hundred multifamily units, which would be apartments or condos, and this would be one hundred and ninety-two of the fourteen hundred that are allowed.
And so they haven't, they haven't built any yet, correct?
Uh.
Apartments.
Apartments, uh, no, this would be the first section of apartments. Well, these are condos, not apartments, but these would be the first section of multifamily besides townhouses.
Okay, but Lady Smith Village has some, correct? Something similar, yeah.
Similar, they have the muse.
Okay. All right, I don't have any more questions right now. Thank you.
I saw it on commercial, where I saw it for commercial uses, multifamily and commercial uses. So where's the commercial at?
Uh, the commercial for the Pendleton rezoning is along Route One. It is not in this section. This section is only the multifamily condo units. And so in the staff report spoke of single-family, multifamily, and commercial. That's throughout the whole neighborhood, not just this section.
Good.
But this is, I think we said two-story? How many stories?
I think it's, uh, three-story. It's, it's twenty-four units per building.
Yeah, twenty-four units per building. Let me verify the stories real quick. Yeah, I'd have to go back and pull the construction plans to verify. It's not listed on this one page that we put into your packet. Um, so I'd have to go back to look at the construction plans as to if they were two or three-story buildings.
Okay, but they do comply, you're saying?
They do comply. Our ordinance allows for twenty-four units per building, and that's what's in each building.
And, but do we have a limit on how many stories high?
There are height limitations throughout the difference.
Yeah, I thought it was.
Depending on the zoning ordinance, yes. I'm sorry, depending on the zoning district, yes.
It's nice when sometimes you see, like, they'll give you a general idea what they, what they want them to look like. This one didn't come with that.
Yeah, it's a by-right subdivision. Um, usually when elevations are provided, it's for rezoning.
The only comment that I would make is I would like to have seen an additional point of ingress and egress because it looks like they're planning for a lot of people and a lot of vehicles. And that one point onto, uh, Edmund Pendleton could become a choke point. Uh, but VDOT is satisfied with it, so.
As a by-right subdivision, it met the requirements for the number of units and one entrance.
Commissioners, any additional questions? It's something that, uh, we don't have a lot of discretion over at this point.
Does sound. Well, I only, well, I'm, it's not a question, but when I was reading it, I, my only concern, so initially when the approval for the thirty-five hundred and eight units, with that in the, in that, uh, approval, did we know then that they were going to build townhouses in that, within that thirty-five hundred?
Yes, the original rezoning designated fourteen hundred apartments or multi multifamily condo units. And so this would be the one hundred and ninety-two of those fourteen hundred allowed.
And I believe we did that last year, or maybe the year before.
The Pendleton rezoning was, was applied for nineteen ninety-nine, approved in two thousand.
Okay.
And so in the year two thousand, the rezoning designated fourteen hundred multifamily units and then twenty-five hundred and eight, um, single-family or tw- or townhouse units.
A couple of days before my time.
Hmm.
What we were born.
Oh.
That is, so these are, since they're condos, they're sold, they're not rented?
Uh, that would depend on the developer as to if they're selling them or renting them.
Okay. I didn't know if it's addressed in the ordinance or not.
Commissioners, any further questions? Is there a motion?
Yes, we. Special service.
Notified of one read.
I've got it right here. Hey, okay, you got it.
All right. Where is the exception request submitted appears to meet the requirements of the zoning subdivision ordinance, I recommend that SB zero two two zero two five be approved as submitted.
A second.
Commissioner Tingler, did you say special exception?
I didn't think so.
Yeah, that's why.
I didn't have the right code.
For the zoning. It's my head from the record.
Apologies, let's try it again. Uh, where is preliminary or final plat submitted? Nope, that's not it. Where is exception? That one?
Yeah.
All right. Where is the preliminary or final plat submitted appears to meet the requirements of the zoning or subdivision ordinance, I recommend that SB zero two two zero two five, uh, Pendleton Land Development LLC be approved as submitted, or be approved subject to the following corrections, uh, be, uh, approved as submitted.
And forwarded to the board of supervisors with a recommendation of approval.
That needs to be updated.
Subdivision, subdivision plaits don't go to the board of supervisors?
Oh, they don't?
No.
Okay, never mind, we'll end it here.
Thank you.
All right, the sec- it was seconded.
Second that. Yeah.
Our motion by Mr. Tingler, seconded by Mr. Young and Mr. Williams. All those in favor, any further discussion? There being no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. All right, any and all matters, that would be Mr. Hughes, I believe.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission.
Good evening.
So tonight, under, uh, any and all matters, um, we're bringing to you a couple of items for initiation for public hearing. To be ordinance amendments. They are related to the zoning and subdivision ordinance, um, amendments regarding the family subdivision provision in the, uh, current ordinance. And tonight at your, um, seats, I passed out the section fifteen point two, twenty-two forty-four provisions for subdivisions of a lot for conveyance to the, to a family member, and this is from the state code of Virginia. I gave you this so you would have some background on the state code requirements as it relates to family divisions. Um, the board has asked us to look at the provisions of the family division ordinance. Um, right now, we do allow family divisions as required by the code of Virginia. Um, in Virginia, most jurisdictions are required to have a provision in their subdivision ordinances for family divisions. Um, there are a couple of ways you can get out. If there's some, you meet some census requirements, then you may not have to have that provision. But Caroline did not qualify for, um, eliminating the family division provision, and so we still have it. Um, the family division provision allows some smaller lots, uh, to be passed on to, uh, immediate family members. Immediate family members is defined, um, on the paper you, that I handed out to you. It is defined as any person who is a natural or legally defined offspring, stepchild, spouse, sibling, grandchild, grandparent, or parent of the owner. So, and in addition, any locality may include aunts, uncles, nieces, and nephews. So our current definition follows those first criterion of, uh, definition there. And so there are, I think, sixty-six counties in Virginia, and I think there are sixty-six different family division provisions in Virginia. Um, the code allows great leeway when it comes to jurisdictions crafting, um, family division provisions. And so that's why there are so many. So, um, currently in Caroline, if you create a family division and pass it on to one of those legally defined offspring, you have to hold that parcel for five years before it can be transferred. And so you, you can have, uh, a minimum of two acres for family division lot. And the way the code is structured right now, you have to have, um, fifty percent of, I always get this wrong. Yeah, at least four acres to be able to give two acres. So the remaining lot has to have at least two acres as well to be eligible for family division. I can tell you, it is probably around the Commonwealth, one of the most abused provisions in subdivision ordinances. Um, it's probably stems from an era gone by when, uh, we were a much more agrarian, uh, community. When I mean community, I mean Commonwealth, and it was much more common for, uh, children to come back to their homesteads to live and help out on the family farm. And so that's kind of where the history stems from. In today's society, that's probably not the norm, but these provisions still persist. And the General Assembly has not made any significant changes to the provision in some while, other than expand the definition of what an eligible family member is. And so the board has asked us to look at this to see if there are amendments, um, that they would find acceptable to maybe, um, increase or change the holding period that you have to have a lot. Uh, possibly consider, um, the lot sizes that are eligible. Uh, consider the, um, any standards for access roads to family division provisions. And so there are any number of things and provisions that we could include in the ordinance as it relates to family divisions, um, you know, going forward. So at this moment, we don't have any, uh, proposed amendments, but, you know, this is something that we are starting to work on in conjunction with the county attorney's office, and we wanted to have the initiation done now so that when we start the process, um, and we bring you all something, we can do that, knowing that we've taken the step to initiate, to move with the public hearing. So we'll have a conversation once we get, uh, some ideas and some proposals together. We will share those with the commission for vetting and, and some ideal exchange, ID, ID, ideas exchanged, and then we will, um, eventually move on to the board and see how they wish to dispose of it. So it's a, it's a pretty significant item in our ordinance that needs to be addressed. Um, and so that's what this is intended to do. The other initiation for public hearing is related to site plan requirements. Um, and right now, in our ordinance, we don't have a provision codified for minor site plans. Um, right now, our ordinance says anything has to have, any development has to have a site plan. Well, if you have a smaller, uh, project that may not need a full-blown site plan, you know, we don't have a provision in our ordinance to allow that. So this amendment would do that and create a, a fewer lesser standard, so to speak, for development, for smaller projects. Right now, every project is created equally, so the million-square-foot warehouse has to go through the same process as the five thousand square foot building. And so creating the minor site plan process will allow some flexibility and make it a lot easier for the citizens and businesses in the, in Caroline to, to do business. So that will be a significant cost savings, um, for those people who are eligible for minor site plan requirements. We do have to develop some criteria, um, and we'll bring those for, for you all to review and have input on before we, you know, move that to the board. Uh, but this is an item that is a, um, I see it as a common sense mechanism to development where you don't have to try to kill a fly with a hammer, so to speak. The other item also relates to kind of site plans and the, the building process. We right now also don't have a provision for minor additions to buildings. So a person coming in and wanting to do its three thousand square foot addition to their retail facility has to go through the same process as the million-square-foot warehouse has to go through, uh, the site plan process. So there again, killing a, a fly with a hammer. The building addition process would allow those additions to come in to the building department with a set of building plans and go through that process and not have to do a site plan. We, we see this a lot, uh, I think the most very commonplace where we see this, say, a fast food restaurant that's been open for a while, and they need additional freezer space. Oftentimes, they'll come in and they'll make an addition to the back or side of the building. And right now, under our process, they have to go through a full-blown site plan to, to do something like that. So in instances, or anyone else who was going to do an addition like that, and oftentimes, a site plan may cost more than the addition that they're adding. And so this is another mechanism to allow, um, what I think is some common sense into the process. And the provisions that we would create would, you know, be such that the additions wouldn't require additional parking. There wouldn't be significant utility relocations associated with those additions. They are purely those, you know, smaller adjustments to sites or buildings that really don't require the full review of every agency, uh, that the county deals with in the building part. It's something that the, the building official and the b- building inspectors and plan reviewer could do relatively quickly and allow those things to, to move through the process, so. Also at your seat tonight, I handed you all, um, two things. Oh, before I go there. The other thing that we want to initiate is amendments to the ordinances related to changes, uh, in the state code that will become effective on July one. And so, you know, every year, our General Assembly, um, comes up with, you know, changes to the code. And this year, there were a couple of changes that, uh, impact us to the point where we need to make amendments to the code pretty quickly, uh, because it impacts our review times for, um, plaits, site plans, our rezoning cases. It impacts our process for rezoning cases. And so, you know, these are amendments that we need to initiate and get adopted because they, the new laws become effective on July one. I think one of the most, the most significant, um, change in the last year General Assembly affects you all because the process you just went through for that preliminary plat, you, the General Assembly has effectively removed the planning commission from that process. And so you guys won't see preliminary plaits anymore. So it's, it would be purely an administrative process. Now, that change essentially mirrors what probably ninety-nine percent of the jurisdictions in Virginia are doing when it comes to preliminary plaits. Because a few years back, the General Assembly changed the code that says essentially if a plat meets the requirements of the code or the ordinance, then you have to approve it. So you really don't have any leeway, if, you know, at this point, relative to plaits. If they, if they meet the provisions of the code, then they have to be approved. And so bringing it to you all was another step in the process. And, you know, the Assembly amended the, the code of Virginia to mirror, you know, essentially the administrative process that was already effectively in place. So also at your seat tonight, you received, um, the text of those changes specifically related to the provisions for site plans, um, and the review times, as well as the change in the, um, administrative plat process. For you all's information and for the public's information, the changes as it relates to review times for plans, plaits, for plans and plaits, the county's review times have been reduced, where we had sixty days to review, um, a plan or plat, we now have forty-five days to do that. And in any area of review that allowed forty-five days, we now have thirty days to review those. In addition, like I said earlier, they removed the provision, um, I think I said this, removed the provision for pre-application requirements um, for rezonings, so jurisdictions can no longer require pre-applications for, uh, plans, plaits, site plans, or any, uh, public hearing case. And we also now have to send plans that were received that, to be reviewed by any state agency. We have to send those plans to those agencies within five days. So before, um, you know, there, there was not a edict on when it had to go. It was just an edict on when they had to respond with comments, those state agencies. Now, we have five days to send those items to those state agencies. So it does require some adjustment in our processes, um, as it relates to plans and plaits and public hearing cases, because we have a ten-day completeness window for new applications. And so, uh, we're just gonna have to make the adjustment and be sure that we get anything that has to be reviewed by a state agency to those agencies within five days. So that doesn't necess- well, it does require an ordinance amendment because our current ordinance says right now for rezoning cases, um, you have to have a pre-application meeting. And so on July one, that provision would no longer be in concert with, uh, code of Virginia. So we will still strongly recommend applicants have pre-application meetings because they are very beneficial uh, for both the applicants and staff. Um, and so we will encourage applicants to continue to do it. They don't have to do it, but we will certainly encourage them. It's much like our community meeting. It's much like our community meeting policy, we don't, it's not a mandate, but there again, it is certainly encouraged. Um, for applicants to to do that public outreach in advance of, you know, filing an application, so. Those are the items um, related to initiation of public hearings, and I also wanted to bring to your attention. I handed you all um, this document here, um, it is a summary from the Virginia chapter of the American Planning Association. Uh, Key Bills for Planner, Planners, APA Legislative Program Final Report, twenty-twenty-five General Assembly. And so it is a summary of all of the bills that got passed. Relative to, that would be of some importance to planners in Virginia. Uh, the planning and land use bills, if you want to just jump to those, they start on page twenty-eight, so you don't have to thumb through every document. Every page of this document, but it's a very helpful guide, and like I said, it is a summary of those bills, so. Um, it's a synopsis, the the bills we talked about tonight relative to the timeframes for review of plans, they are noted in here, I think on page twenty-nine. Um, and it just, you know, gives you an overview of what the legislation did um, when it becomes effective on July one. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, I can imagine you have a few.
One quick question, sir. Uh, what about final plat approval, I mean, we've had those before us in the past.
Yes, that is also removed.
Okay.
Yes.
You mentioned some abuse associated with the family subdivision, what particularly are you referring to?
So. The most common way it is abused is someone would come in and create a parcel under the family division provision. Hold it for the prescribed time and then put it out on the open market. And then that particular parcel does not conform to the subdivision requirements, because family. The family division provision is exempt from the zoning ordinance standards, so that's why you're allowed to have a specific standard related to those. Individual um, types of parcels.
Help me understand how they're different and in what way specifically are they non-conforming?
So lot size, so ninety-five percent of our county is zoned RP. The RP zoning classification has a ten-acre lot minimum, if you have an existing non-conforming lot of four acres. Then you could give your brother, Mr. Young, a two-acre lot, so now we have. Two even more non-conforming lots from the provision of the RP district. Access, they don't have to have public road frontage, so they can be accessed via an easement. Um, we don't have prescribed standards for what those easements are are made of or how they're constructed. So there are, those are the two most common or three most common ways that they are non-conforming.
So so still like one cutoff per plot, right? But what could happen is somebody could cut off ten acres and that person hold on it to it. Then cut off some more acreage, correct, after certain amount, so that's one way it's getting abused too. They're dividing, then subdividing again, then subdividing again.
Yeah, you you effectively end up with subdivisions that have not conformed, that don't conform to the subdivision requirements.
And that has happened in Caroline County where a person with a large plot of land will subdivide it. And in essence, give it to his uh, in-laws, outlaws, and anyone else in their family. That uh, they could put a title or deed to that land, hold it for the five years and then sell it as at a. Uh, commercial rate, so they were in essence creating their own little subdivision. And at the end of the five years, the land that was subdivided was not owned by anyone in the family, so.
Also did not have V not, V dot regulation roads, so you've got a subdivision without proper roads.
Yeah, the way it's set up right now, there are ten eligible family members. Defined, so. You could, someone could come in, they had enough acreage, you could create ten lots immediately, just giving them to. You know, people who are defined as immediate family, per the code of, as it's defined.
Any further questions? Well, Mr. Hughes. Give me a starting order of what you need and.
So essentially, what I need tonight is for the commission to initiate uh. Public hearings for amendments to the zoning ordinance and also the subdivision ordinance, because. The these changes in the code affect both of those ordinances, um, and so. That's where the amendments will occur, so.
Just those two?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Now, there may be, and I will say this, there will be multiple, just to be clear, there will be multiple revisions in both of those documents. But it's just those two documents.
All right, sure. All right, commissioners, any further questions before we proceed? All right, I move that the planning commission initiate amendments to the regulations of the zoning ordinance related to, one, family subdivisions. Two, procedures and requirements for site plan supplemental and approval, and three, amendments to state code enacted by the. General Assembly and effective July one, twenty-twenty-five, including twenty-twenty-five Acts of Assembly. Chapters one hundred and five forty-five ninety-four, such amendments to the zoning regulations being required by the public. Necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practices. Is there a second? Motion by the chair, seconded by Mr. Young, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay, the ayes have it, motion carries. Anyone care to make a motion on item or the second item on your page?
So I will move that the planning commission initiate amendments of the subdivision ordinance related to, number one, family subdivisions. Number two, procedures and requirements for subdivisions, plats, metal, and approval. And number three, amendments to the state code enacted by the general family and effective July one, twenty-twenty-five. Including twenty-twenty-five Acts of Assembly, chapters one hundred and five ninety-four. Such amendments to the regulations being required by the public necessity, convenience, general welfare. And the orderly subdivision of land and its development.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
I can second that one.
All right, motion by Dr. Horton, seconded by Mr. Williams, all, no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay, the ayes have it, motion carries. Any further, Mr. Hughes, Mr. Pennington? All right, is there a motion to adjourn to the July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five meeting?
I make motion, Mr. Chairman, that we adjourn to July.
Motion by Mr. Young?
I can second that.
Seconded by Mr. Williams, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, the ayes have it, motion carries, this meeting is adjourned, thank you one and all.